Buenas tardes. Gracias a todos por venir y pasar tiempo de tu agenda hoy. Nosotros, en Taus, estamos muy emocionados con este nuevo despacho 911 y cómo estamos viendo la nueva tecnología y cómo estamos tratando de avanzar hacia el futuro. Hemos tenido algunas presentaciones y hoy esperamos que podamos explicar todas esas cosas a ustedes. Pero primero quiero agradecerles por pasar tiempo de su agenda. Sé que es realmente difícil para ustedes deshacerse de esto. Y tenemos buena representación de Taus County, de muchos departamentos. Sé que el representante va a estar aquí hoy. Va a venir un poco más tarde. Estamos esperando a un par de personas más del departamento de sheriff. No creo que haya alguien del departamento de sheriff que venga.
¿El sheriff tiene una identidad de emergencia?
Sí, lo sé. Está enviando un representante. Entonces, si pudimos empezar muy rápido alrededor de la habitación para darle a nuestros presentadores una idea de quién está aquí hoy y qué distrito y para quién trabaja. Que están aquí para representar al comisionado.
Buenos días a todos. Gabriel Romedo, vicepresidente de la Comisión de la Comunidad de Taus. Bienvenidos a todos.
Buenos días a todos. Larry Sanchez, Distrito Duque, Comisionado de la Comunidad.
Jonathan Gonzalez, Detención Administrador para los Detentados y Detenciones Adultas en Taus.
Comisionado.
Adriana Gonzalez, Mayor Pro Tem de la ciudad de Taus.
Tomás Trujillo, en nombre de Don Gallegos, oficio de Attórrimo del Distrito.
Comisionada Olson, Chief Lieutenant.
Dan Maroni, presidente de la Comunidad de Taus y representante del Distrito.
Bob Malone, Capitán.
Brandon Tardemiro, Director de la Carga de la Comunidad y también represento al pueblo de Costa. Como Mayor Pro Tem.
Mi nombre es Regina Icberri y recientemente he sido Director de la Comunidad de Indiana y estoy interesada en telecomunicaciones aquí en Taus.
Algunos de ustedes representan al Centro de Despacho 911.
Yo soy la representante del Centro de Despacho 911 aquí en Taus.
Yo soy Brownie Espinoza, administradora de la Comunidad de Taus.
Yo soy Ruben Martinez, administrador de la IT de la ciudad de Taus.
Negro Gonzalez, Fire Chief Tom Taus.
Martin Trujillo, Advançóramos Comunicaciones.
Ken Martinez, Director de la Carga de la Comunidad.
Greg Trujillo, Director de la Comisión de Sheriffías de Taus. Primero quiero agradecer al personal por poner esto juntos y enviar todos los invites y todo. Durante el día vamos a tener diferentes personas que van a venir y ser parte de esto. Voy a pasarle el cargo a Mr. Bellis, quien también tendrá paseos disponibles más tarde hoy para personal que quiera ver la instalación y los nuevos servicios.
La cuestión del 911 ha sido bastante popular en las páginas principales y las diferencias con todos. Y han habido muchas cambios en el pasado. Como ya sabe, nombramos al Director de la Carga de la Comunidad. La Comunidad tomó la responsabilidad del sistema de repetidor, que es la forma de transmitir señales para el despacho 911 fuera del corredor de la ciudad de Taus. Todas esas cosas se ven positivas. Preguntaré a la gente, no importa cuál sea su opinión sobre dónde debería estar la instalación física o el ordenamiento para el despacho combinado 911. Más allá de eso, una de las cosas más importantes que realmente necesitamos hacer es que tenemos software, tenemos equipos de sistemas en place que dan a nuestros primeros respondientes un estado de arturo que protege sus vidas, como hemos visto con los bomberos, tanto aquí en México como en Arizona. Tratamos de terrenos muy malos, slopes profundos, altos vientos, malas climáticas, como podemos ver hoy. Cosas que hacen su trabajo realmente posible. Una de las cosas que estábamos buscando cuando comenzamos a examinar la cuestión del 911 era la idea de mejorar nuestro tiempo de respuesta, lo que sea, EMS, Fire, law enforcement, para llegar a las personas, en particular en áreas rurales, y superar algunos de nuestros problemas de abastecimiento. Haciendo eso, algunos de nuestros puntos mortales para comunicaciones y que integra todo el law enforcement. Todos tenemos más gastos, más presiones en la entrega de servicio. Los costos aumentan todo el tiempo. En algún punto, no podemos seguir añadiendo personal a los tribunales. No podemos seguir añadiendo oficiales para responder. Simplemente no tenemos los ingresos, así que tenemos que encontrar formas más eficientes de hacer eso. La manera más inteligente de hacer eso es si reducimos el tiempo que los oficiales tienen que pasar llenando de informes después de incidente. Si reducimos el tiempo que los despachos tienen que pasar para buscar información. En nombre de esos oficiales, si podemos tener un sistema integrado desde el oficial en el campo a través del despacho, a través del manejo de registros, a los tribunales y desde los tribunales que emiten warrantes, de vuelta al sistema. La información ya está ahí en la cárcel cuando traes a un prisionero para que los oficiales no estén sentados durante 45 minutos esperando a llenar de informes. Y no tenemos dos oficiales de detención atrapados en eso. Así que, de nuevo, es la idea de eficiencia. Es hacer los trabajos más precisos, más fáciles, más eficientes para todos en el sistema. Y para eso suceder, eso significa que los departamentos de Fire y el software que usan, el sistema que usan, la electrónica que usan, cómo obtienen esa información, EMS, la ciudad, la ciudad, Costa, todos, todos los que participan en esto. Espero que la idea de qué software usamos se vea más allá de la política de ubicación, como si fuera uno, dos, cinco o nada. Todo el mundo puede estar de acuerdo que es crítico que todos usemos la misma información y que no tengamos un policía saliendo de una carroza y entrando en una situación donde él puede no tener la mejor información disponible y su vida está en juego o la vida de un residente que estamos respondiendo está en juego. Previmos un número de sistemas que se usan en todo el país. Spillman es uno. Hubo una reunión ayer para aquellos que estuvieran interesados en venir, prever los sistemas SLU. Creemos que estos dos, sabemos que todo el mundo no tiene mucho tiempo, pero estos dos realmente son los más populares en la región que estamos operando y proporcionan esos tipos de ventajas que estamos buscando. Te invito a que cuando estemos listos para la cena, si quisieras, podemos darles un tour de la ubicación. Creo que probablemente vamos a poner nuestra capacidad de despacho, que es lo que originalmente se diseñó en este edificio, la sala de despacho y el oficio de sheriff, que es sobre la instalación de detención. Si alguien está interesado, también podemos darles un tour del edificio de planificación, que es nuestra propuesta de primer lugar. Still espero que todos los enemigos que forman parte del JPA puedan resolver las cosas. Pero incluso si no podemos, es importante que después de que ese diálogo termine que no paramos de hablar con el grupo de proveedores de seguridad pública que se juntan para hablar de cómo asegurar que el sistema es flexible, bien integrado y que sus intereses sean protegidos así como los de los públicos. Así que he visto una buena parte de esta presentación y creo que realmente van a disfrutarla. Ayuda a visualizar lo que realmente estamos tratando de alcanzar en el próximo generación. No solo moviéndose de una parte a otra, de una ubicación a otra, o cambiando de personas, sino realmente estableciendo un objetivo a largo plazo para la seguridad pública en esta comunidad. Y con eso, me gustaría...
Frank, ¿has...?
Frank, voy a ir primero.
Bien, Frank.
Desde Advançóramos Comunicaciones, tomaré el cargo de aquí.
Bueno, gente, mi nombre es Frank August y lo que yo encargada específicamente son, en realidad, implementaciones de datos grandes para Advançóramos Comunicaciones. Mi experiencia es de la zona norte de New Jersey, pero cargo de agencias de seguridad pública muy grandes allí para incluir la Policía de New Jersey y NYPD. Lo que van a ver aquí es lo que se llama un sistema integrado. Dos cosas deben suceder a cualquier momento que un agente de respuesta de emergencia esté involucrado. Lo primero es que cada pieza, cada aspecto de lo que están haciendo es accountable y tiene que ser responsable por un oficial o un agente de Fire en una forma que la persona fuera en el campo pueda entender y usar. La segunda situación es lo que se llama interoperabilidad. Y Mr. Bellis ha tocado eso. Cualquier sistema que estés usando, ya sea un sistema CAD, sistema RMS, lo que tiene que suceder es que debe haber un flujo de documentos a una instalación de almacenamiento para que esos documentos puedan ser recogidos fácilmente y usados por las personas que los necesitan. En cuanto a sistemas CAD, he tenido la oportunidad para una agencia llamada Lightsec. Lightsec fue la Comisión de Tecnologías de Información y Estándares de Law. Y lo que era, era una agencia que en cambio fue en realidad financiada por el Bureau de Justicia para cambiar y evaluar los requisitos para CAD y RMS. Basado en esas experiencias, me dieron la oportunidad de separar a 11 de los principales CADs que están allí. Con eso, mi propia opinión es que Spillman ofrece el mayor bolsillo de dinero. Es un sistema interoperativo. Cada uno de los procesos que vas a ver son simples de usar y no requieren una gran cantidad de entrenamiento para que tus oficiales o agentes los usen. Interferirá con la mayoría de todo lo que está allí y en cambio, en mi opinión profesional, es lo que deberías estar mirando. Y habiendo dicho eso, ahora tenemos a los Spillman, Ryan y Dave. Ellos tomarán el cargo y les mostrarán exactamente lo que estoy hablando. Buenas tardes, gente.
Gracias, Frank. Y gracias, Mr. Archuleta y Mr. Bellis. Creo que aporta mucha credibilidad a quiénes somos al tener Advançóramos Comunicaciones y a tus líderes de la Comunidad presentándonos, así que apreciamos eso. Mi nombre es Ryan Montgomery de Spillman Technologies y traí a Dave Schneider conmigo que va a hacer la demo hoy. Y estoy empezando a perder mi voz y voy a pasarle el cargo a Dave rápidamente, pero tengo una presentación muy corta para ustedes aquí. Y porque estoy perdiendo mi voz, voy a hacerlo muy, muy rápidamente aquí. Así que en cuanto a los objetivos de la agencia, sé que tenemos muchos representantes de una amplia variedad de diferentes agencias aquí hoy. Pero lo más importante que creo que sus personas van a necesitar es algo que sea user friendly, algo que sea fácil de usar, que pueden aprender rápidamente. En este momento, actualmente, tienen algunos programas diferentes que usan. Lo que nos gustaría hacer es reducir muchos de esos programas y usar solo Spillman Technologies. Se mencionó anteriormente que tenemos un sistema integrado. Hay muchas piezas de este software, así que vamos a tener que darles una visión rápida hoy porque incluso tenemos un componente de la cárcel que ni siquiera mostraremos hasta más tarde hoy. Pero lo que hacemos es darles un único punto de entrada. Así que ya sea que seas un despacho o ya sea que estés en Fire o ya sea que seas un oficial en patrulla, solo entras ese nombre una vez y es usado durante todo el sistema. Así que si alguien ha entrado ese nombre o ese vehículo o ese pedazo de propiedad, si se encuentra alguna vez y se usa por alguien más en el futuro, no tienen que reentrarlo porque eso ya ha sido entrado una vez. Eso te da una integración sistemática. Así que no importa qué departamento o agencia representas aquí, vas a poder usar esa información en toda la agencia, cada departamento dentro de la Comunidad de Taus. Y lo que te permitirá hacer es que se auto-popule. Así que puedes descubrir que esta persona tenía un tatuaje o puedes descubrir que conducen una nueva carroza ahora. Así que vas a estar agregando a esa información y toda la información previa se va a auto-popular para que no tengas que reentrarla una y otra vez. Lo que te permitirá hacer es obtener cuestiones precisas del sistema porque en este momento, actualmente, cuando tratas de buscar un informe o buscar un sistema, tienes que buscarlo en varios modos diferentes. Johnny Doe, John Doe, tienes que buscarlo de ambos modos, encontrar toda la información. En Spillman, vas a poder conseguir una búsqueda más precisa. En cuanto a multijurisdiccional, eso es lo que Spillman especializa. Así que traiga a los departamentos de Fire, poder tener al D.A. acceder a tu sistema, los tribunales poder acceder a tu sistema, la cárcel poder acceder a tu sistema. Todo es parte del mismo sistema y es así que creamos nuestro sistema. En cuanto a lograr estos objetivos, muchas veces comparo esto con una pizza. Y si piensas en una pizza, hay muchas piezas de esa pizza. Y no es solo software y funcionalidad, también hay entrenamiento y educación. Cuando una agencia viene a Spillman, entrenamos a cada persona en tu agencia. Y pueden no estar entrenados en todo el sistema, pero estarán entrenados en lo que van a usar el sistema. También tienes que pensar en la interoperabilidad. ¿Es el software capaz de agregar a las agencias? Puedes tener Angel Fire y algunas de estas agencias en la área que pueden querer venir a este sistema. ¿Permite el software eso? Nosotros lo permitimos. En cuanto a la experiencia, hemos estado haciendo esto durante más de 30 años. Y de hecho, solo especializamos en seguridad pública. No hacemos ninguna otra cosa en nuestra compañía. Solo hacemos seguridad pública. Otra pieza de esa pizza es el apoyo y licencia y las actualizaciones y mantenimiento. Con Spillman, compras el programa una vez. Nunca hay un momento en el camino donde vayamos y digamos: "Si quieres la nueva versión, nos dejas esto de dinero". Todas las actualizaciones y mejoras del software están incluidas. Nunca hay nada más tarde en el camino donde te sorprenderán y dirán:[945.89][945.89]"Si quieres lo más actual y lo mejor, nos dejas esto de dinero". Todo está incluido. En cuanto a Spillman Technologies y quién somos, este es nuestro edificio ubicado en Salt Lake City, Utah. En realidad trabajo desde un oficio de casa en Arizona. Pero como ya mencioné, hemos estado haciendo esto durante más de 30 años. Solo hacemos seguridad pública. Nunca hemos sido vendidos o comprados y no hemos tenido ninguna implementación fallida en 30 años. Tenemos más de 1,200 clientes en todo el país y nunca una vez hemos fallado en la implementación. 部分 de las ventajas que obtienes con Spillman, como se ha hablado aquí hoy, es la integración. Así que vas a ver eso mientras Dave te muestra el software. Todo está integrado y va a ser difícil porque algunos de ustedes en su departamento, en su mundo, algo que Dave va a enseñarte no se aplica realmente a ustedes, pero de una manera circular lo hace porque ya sea un despacho que entra esa información o un oficial en el camino, va a devolverte a tu área. Así que en el futuro, esa información puede beneficiarte. Otra cosa con la que quería terminar es solo los informes que obtienes de Spillman. Sé que actualmente, ahora, tratar de obtener información de la sistema en un formato usable y leible es muy difícil, muy difícil. Es casi como si tuvieras que ser programador para obtener la información. Con Spillman, hay más de 2,000 informes preformados que salen del sistema. Puedes customizarlos, puedes tener reporte ad hoc. Cualquiera de estas imágenes que ves aquí, puedes sacar de la sistema muy rápido, muy rápido y cualquiera de la organización puede hacerlo. No tienes que ser un profesional entrenado para poder ir y sacar esta información como Dave les mostrará hoy. Así que con eso dicho, dejaré a Dave Schneider presentarse. Y él tiene experiencia en la law enforcement. Ha estado allí, ha usado Spillman y todos han hablado un poco de eso. Pero déjate de lado de preguntar o hacer preguntas y también hay comida aquí, así que no se escondan.
Gracias. Gracias y buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Dave Schneider. He venido a UVA, el oficio de sheriff de la Comunidad de Utah, donde serví 22 años y retiré como lieutenant. Como lieutenant recién formado en la Comunidad de Utah, me ordenaron por el sheriff para encontrar un software de seguridad pública que funcionara porque nuestro estaba fallando. Así que esa fue la primera cosa que hice cuando me convertí en lieutenant. Me llevó dos y medio años, veté a nueve diferentes vendedores y llegué a Spillman. Cuando lo llevamos a la vida, en realidad llevamos 17 agencias de policía, 22 agencias de Fire, 22 agencias de EMS y cinco centros de despacho a una sola servidor. Todavía tengo la mayoría de mi pelo. Aún no ha ido completamente blanco. Pero después de mi tiempo en la Comunidad de Utah como administrador de sistema durante unos cinco años, estaba mirando... ¡Me he quedado muy cansado con lo que estoy haciendo en esta arena! Quiero expandir. Spillman me ofreció una posición, acepté esa posición. Ahora volé por todo el país, demostrando a ustedes cinco personas lo que nuestro sistema es capaz de proporcionar. Es un sistema muy, muy robusto. Tiene muchas cosas que te proporciona. Así que en lugar de escucharme hablar mucho sobre lo que hice, déjame ir adelante y mostrarles el software en sí. Te he dado por unos dos horas, estamos a unos 30 minutos en ello. Así que voy a ir muy rápido, muy alto. Si tienes una pregunta, por favor, déjame saber. Trabajarán un poco el software, mostrarán algunos de ellos. Pero debido al grupo que he obtenido aquí, va a ser más de una visión general en lugar de... Esto son procedimientos precisos de cómo funciona el software. Lo que ustedes quieren ver, y díganme si no les estoy mostrando lo que quieren ver. Pero lo que están mirando es una visión general, la base de lo que el software es capaz de hacer para que puedan tomar una determinación: ¿Este producto va a funcionar para nosotros en una escala muy grande? Así que voy a iniciar el proceso de sesión. Ves que tengo un icono creado en mi barra de herramientas aquí abajo. Selecciono ese icono y activo una ventana de splash. La ventana de splash abre mi ID de usuario y mi contraseña. Ese es el comienzo de la seguridad del sistema. Somos dual autenticación, procedentes, multi autenticación capaces. Lo que significa, tienen que saber quién eres, tienen que saber dónde estás y tienen que tener algo que tengas. Si lo miras muy rápidamente, aparecerá ahí y dice "Autenticación verificada". Se produce muy, muy rápido. Así que lo primero que quieren saber, quieren saber lo que sé y un poco de device plug-in aquí. Fue tan rápido que probablemente ni siquiera lo vieron. Pero tenemos la capacidad de autenticación dual factor. Vais a notar que aquí aparece la siguiente pantalla de splash. Esta pantalla de splash es para seleccionar la base de datos. Voy a ser honesto contigo, la mayoría de las agencias no activan esto. La razón por la que lo activo es porque quiero mostrarles cuál es la capacidad de la base de datos. Cuando lo abro, notarás que aquí tengo la capacidad de un banco de práctica y una base de datos de tutor. Así que cuando y si somos afortunados de ser tu vendedor selectivo y vengamos a la localidad para entrenar a tu gente, en realidad utilizarán el software. Tratarán de practicar ejercicios para cada usuario. Despachos, administradores, patrulla, investigaciones, correcciones... Todo el mundo está entrenado en lo que es su trabajo específico, responsabilidad y funciones. Así que esto nos da la capacidad de tener esa base de datos de práctica para ti y puedes utilizar esa base de datos de práctica en el futuro porque va a haber intercambio en tus organizaciones. Lo que hacemos es darles la capacidad de entrenar a tu personal en un entorno de práctica porque van a cometer errores. Así que por qué no permitirles, enseñarles y permitirles hacer esos errores en un entorno controlado para que no se moleste con tus datos live. Eso es lo que ese banco de práctica es para. También tenemos un geoparís porque si cargas un archivo geográfico que tiene un pequeño bit de corrupción, traerá al servidor a sus pies. Así que te damos la capacidad, si cargas archivos geográficos y quieres la capacidad de ADL en el sistema, puedes cargarlos y testarlos antes de ponerlos en la página del servidor live. Durante 30 años, te preguntarás algunas cosas sobre cómo funciona el sistema. Y así te daremos esa capacidad. Para los fines de hoy, voy a ingresar al sistema live. Seré un superusuario. Puedo ver todo, puedo hacer todo. No hay nada en el sistema, pero no tengo la capacidad de entrar y acceder. Notarás que un par de pantallas aparecen aquí. Voy a hablar en profundidad sobre esta pantalla aquí, pero quiero dar un vistazo a esta pantalla detrás. Esto es lo que los oficiales en el campo verán. Este es su leche y leche, esto es lo que hacen todo el día. Así que voy a hablar de esto en sólo un poco. Voy a darles una base y voy a hablar un poco de CAD y les mostraré cómo funciona el flujo, el flujo de trabajo dentro de nuestro software. Te da una idea, lo que están mirando aquí es la pantalla de inicio. Tenemos algunas herramientas disponibles. Tengo un centro de mensajes, aquí es donde comunicas dentro del sistema. Así que no tendrás que depender de un algoritmo, Yahoo o algo más para tener comunicación interior segura. La información del sistema tiene tres llamadas CAD que están en funcionamiento. Soy el director de la unidad 104, mi derecho es el derecho al sur y puedo ver mis incidentes de las últimas dos semanas. Aquí tengo una técnica. Les mostraré todo eso de capacidad en sólo unos minutos. En realidad voy a minimizar eso por sólo un minuto y vamos a enfocarnos en estas dos ventanas. Esta primera ventana aquí es el centro de comandos. Dentro del centro de comandos, si sabes qué es el comando, puedes escribir ese comando y te llevará a cualquier lugar en el software. No hay paredes, no hay heras. Si necesitas ver un registro de vehículo, escribe "vehículo" en esa línea y te llevará a la mesa del vehículo. Si necesitas ver un nombre, escribes nombres. Es tan fácil. Ahora, porque eso, creanlo o no, es realmente tecnología antigua, pero es una tecnología extraordinariamente poderosa. Si tienes despachos sesionados, odian bajar a la maleta porque es un desperdicio de su tiempo. En realidad puedes ejecutar nuestro sistema CAD desde el teclado. Ni siquiera necesitas una maleta para hacer funcionar. Así que es muy práctico porque hemos estado en el negocio durante 30 años. En realidad somos más que Microsoft. Esa línea de comando es extraordinariamente poderosa. Puedes saltar a cualquier lugar en el sistema si necesitas ir. Pero porque personas como yo han evolucionado a través del proceso, soy un tipo de toque. Me gusta poder ver una imagen y tocarla. Eso es lo que es este secundario. Este es el menú de la árbol. Y ustedes tienen que perdonarme, voy a deshacer a mis lectores porque estoy... Estoy getting older y mis ojos no se enfocan como solían. Dentro de este menú principal, este menú de árbol, puedes ver que tenemos colecciones. Dentro de cada una de esas colecciones tenemos lo que es... ¿Quién está riendo? Oí que alguien se ríe de mis lectores. Un día va a pasar, quien sea. Bien, de vuelta en camino. Dentro del menú de la caja, puedes notar que tenemos una serie de opciones diferentes. Ahora, mantén en cuenta, soy un superusuario, veo todo. Esto parece intimidante. Cuando tus usuarios se instalen, nuestros entrenadores vendrán y te preguntarán quién usa qué funciones y les concederán solo esas funciones a personas específicas. Así que si necesitas ver la tabla de nombres, el registro de vehículos y la tabla de propiedad y nada más, eso es todo lo que ves en esa tabla. Dentro de seguridad pública, sé que tengo a mucha gente aquí que tiene mucha experiencia en seguridad pública, pero tengo algunos que no. Hay tres principales entidades con las que se trata la seguridad pública. Tratan a la gente, tratan a la propiedad y tratan a vehículos. Esas son las tres cosas que tratan todos los días, todo el día. Ese es el centro de nuestro sistema. Ese es el centro, ese es el centerpiece. Dentro de nuestro menú de la caja, puedes ver que tenemos la tabla de nombres, tenemos la tabla de vehículos y tenemos la tabla de propiedad. Lo que pasa es que cuando clickeo en eso, pone el comando en la línea de comando para mí. ¿Tiene sentido? Así que incluso si te perdiste ese dato de entrenamiento, todavía puedes averiguarlo muy rápido. ¿Comando igual a una tabla? Si decides que quieres, y parte de mis responsabilidades y funciones es la de personas queridas, tengo encargado de los warrantes, puedo tomar un icono, levantarlo a la barra de iconos, liberarlo y he creado mis propios defaults. Así que como usuario, si quiero deshacerse de esta tabla completamente y cerrarla, ahora tengo todas las herramientas que uso todos los días en la parte superior porque el real estate en una pantalla computadora es más valioso que el real estate en el mundo real. Así que ahora tienes mucho más espacio, pero mira esa cosa. ¿Tiene sentido? Pasemos a la tabla de nombres. Lo que voy a hacer es activar la tabla de nombres porque cada contacto que la seguridad pública tiene tiene alguien asociado con él. Como víctima, como demandante, como testigo, como defensor, vas a tratar con alguien. Y la forma en que nuestro sistema se establece, entras el registro de nombre de esa persona una vez en el sistema y luego usas esa información una y otra y otra vez creando involucraciones. Así que para activar la tabla de nombres, simplemente selecciona eso, clickeo en él. Abre la tabla de nombres. Déjame darles un par de segundos rápidos para digestar eso. Eso tiene mucha información. En mis 22 años de servicio de seguridad pública, me di cuenta de que la law enforcement recoge, el fire y el despacho recogen volúmenes de información y nunca tuve un lugar para poner todo hasta que encontré Spillman porque lo que ves allí es la primera capa de datos. En realidad hay cuatro capas de datos en esa tabla. Vais a notar que aquí al principio tenía un par de iconos que tenía la capacidad de... Puedo salir o puedo buscar. No tengo la capacidad de modificar el registro actual porque no hay datos allí para modificar. Notarás que aún no tengo la capacidad de agregar un nuevo registro. ¿Por qué es eso, supones? Porque los policías son policías, despachos son despachos. Si estoy tratando con John Smith, escribo "John Smith", este es el contacto que tengo con John Smith. Tengo que hacer John Smith y estoy listo con mi pie. And I'm done with my piece, the next person that has contact with John Smith jumps in, and they do John Smith, and they add John Smith. Pretty soon you have ten, fifteen, twenty John Smith records in your system. How efficient is that? Because if you want to get a picture of what John Smith has done in your organization, in your multi-jurisdictional setup, you have to look at each record, and it's a gigantic waste of time. And you might just miss one, because somebody might miss stuff. So back at Spillman about twenty-eight years ago, we told them, you saw a picture of Spillman on Ryan's thing, it had a nice building, second floor, east end. This is the area of the building that I refer to as the Nervery, because that's where we keep the nerds. And we told them, "Guys, how do you get them to stop doing that?" And they said, "Simple, deny them access." Well, you can't deny them access, they have to be able to add a name record. And they said, "No, no, you don't understand. Make them search for the record first to see if it exists within the database. If it exists in the database, pretty soon, the cops are pretty quick on the uptake, they can figure it out. If that record exists in the data, guess what, I don't have to do anymore. I don't have to enter it anymore, it's already there." So, in order for me to search, you'll notice that the search icon is currently activated, it's highlighted, it has focus. If I tap enter, it drops my cursor into the last name field, because that's how you find people. You can't type the first four or five characters of a person's last name. I'm looking for Mr. Adam Flutie. Is Flutie I-E, or E-Y, or Y, or I? I don't know. See that asterisk? But I know what an asterisk is and does. It is a wildcard character, it says, "I do not care what comes after that. Show me F-L-U-T, I don't care, bring everything." We transfer to the next field, tab over, tap in the first initial, put another asterisk, tap F3 because you don't need to, or you can click enter. At the bottom of the page, I'll bring it up so you can see it, is a list of individuals that meet that search criteria. Pretty simple to use, isn't it? And if I accept that or tap enter, there is Mr. Adam Flutie. All of the data that's associated with his name record. And there is a lot there. First things that should jump right out at you is this ability for us to capture images and link them directly to the record. This is the image viewer, so now I can scroll through and see what images Mr. Flutie, including scars, marks, tattoos. Whatever information you need to attach to the record, attach to the record. Makes sense? Couple of other things that should jump right out at you, big white, or big red box with white lettering. Assaults police, this individual has been known to assault police in the past. What is that piece of information worth on the street? That raises situational awareness for your officers. That warning follows his name record everywhere in the software. So if I pull up a motor vehicle that is registered to Mr. Adam Flutie, he's the owner, the owner section of that vehicle registration will tell me that he has been known to assault police. That is huge for public safety, officer safety. Next one over is what's called critical notice. It's not as bold as a word or warning, but it's good information. This individual's currently on parole. And there's a plus sign, meaning there's more than one. This blue box right here is the sex offender registry. He's a tier-two sex offender. So you've got all of that information. We haven't even gone about a quarter page down. There's a lot of data that's available here. You can see the demographic information that's available. Physical description, including ethnicity, whether or not they have a beard, their hair's got a glasses complexion, speech. Down here you have their traits, their scars, marks, and tattoos, their modus operandi information. Alert codes, down in the narrative of it, there's any comments related to this name record. Has this individual had information merged? Meaning, did someone accidentally create a duplicate record? Yes, and it's going to happen. But we give you a tool whereby you can merge those records together. It's a very efficient tool. Has this person visited inmates in the jail? That ampersand means that they have. Has this person had visitors in jail? Or maybe hasn't. So there's a lot of information available on that. Again, that's the first layer of data. The second layer of data, if you look at these fields, look at the little tick up at the corner, a little tick mark, a little hash mark up there, that's the second layer of data. That's what's called a coded field. That coded field indicates that data can only go into that record one way. What is B-R-A-O, is it B-R-N? If you don't have a system that forces officers, dispatchers, firefighters, EMS personnel to put it in one way, they will put it in as B-R-O, they will put it in as B-R-N, they will put it in as B-R. What does that do for your data? Dirty, dirty data. Because now you have to search on B-R, B-R-N, B-R-O in order to get that information back out. So this is the second layer of data. Gives you the capability to only allow certain pieces of information into your system. Makes sense? His eyes are blue, so I'm not going to have to change them around today.
Are those codes NCIC compatible?
One more time.
Are those codes NCIC compatible?
They are the NCIC codes. If you look at that when I click on that, you'll have things like champagne. Champagne colors, right? Wow, that's bizarre. That is the NCIC code. And because we don't want to load seven hundred different code tables, we give you one place for all colors in the system. So vehicle color, property color, all feeds off of this table. It's got a very robust capability there. So, and I'll show you when we get to the next little part, how you can utilize this record to complete an NCIC record. Makes sense? Any questions? You guys seen stuff you like so far? Hang on, because it's going to get a lot better from here. The next layer of data is this ampersand right here. That means that that's a detail table. Because there's only so much real estate available on a computer screen. Does a person have more than one scar mark or tattoo? Well, yeah, most of them will. When you click in that, it opens a detail field. Inside that detail field, you can have unlimited pieces of information associated with this name record. So if this person has tattoo from head to toe, and you want to keep a record of every tattoo, you can. How does that work for you in the field? I'll cancel that, and I'm going to search. And you'll notice when I hit the search button, watch what happens. Every single field on that table is searchable. Every single field. What information do you have about the suspect? Well, it tells me suspect has a rose tattoo. If I put an asterisk before it and an asterisk after it, what am I searching for? Anything that has the word "rose" in it. In the entire database, I can tap F3 or select accept. There is a list of the names of individuals in my database that have the word "rose" in their tattoo, with the exception of Mr. Larry Patrick Brown. I'll click on Larry Patrick Brown, you see his information here. He has been fighting with his girlfriend. There's a scar that he received, I said, for fighting with his girlfriend. If I select that detail field, three records deep is purple rose. That's the power of the search capability from the system. What information do you have? Ask the system, "This is what I've got. What records do you have related to that?" And it'll provide that information back to you. And search again on "my girlfriend," I come off, I search for Mr. Flutie. Okay. Down here we have this dot, dot, dot. That is the editor field. Inside that editor field, you can type unlimited information. If you want to type a novel related to observations about Mr. Flutie, you can type it. And as you can see, it is spreadsheet key. Which is awesome. Because there's one thing that props don't do well in this spell. Makes sense? Now, let's take a look. You've seen some of the data that's available. I'm going to jump past some of these things and jump right to involvements. I'm going to spend just a few minutes here, because this is vitally important. This is something Spillman does better than anybody in the industry. Involvements, we've got our friend, Mr. Adam Flutie's master name index, that is his name record. Now, every single contact that public safety has with Mr. Flutie needs to be linked to that record. That's what the involvements do. When I select involvements, here is a linear list of every involvement associated with Mr. Flutie's name record. So I can see every single contact public safety has had with Mr. Flutie in one place. Makes sense? He has thirty-five contacts, everything from a field interview that was conducted on December thirteenth of two thousand and six. I'll page up, to law incidents, to jail records, to his sex offender records. Everything. If I need to see this domestic right here, all I have to do is click on it, and it opens that record for me. I don't have to remember a number, write it down, jump to a different screen. I click on it, and it opens that record for me. Now you can see that I have images associated with this that I can look at. Cat was not injured as a result of its participation in this. Something a little more germane probably to the investigation, I think. I can see all the data associated with this record. This is what the law incident looks like, you have your incident, your complaint, the details, the narrative information, and the workflow. I'll show you that in just a few minutes. If I check the involvements here, I can see everything that's involved to this incident. Including Mr. Flutie, that's where we started, correct? But involvements go both ways. If I can find the incident, I can find the suspect. If I can find the suspect, I can find the incident. I can find a vehicle, I can find an owner, and all of the citations, all of the traffic crashes, and everything that's been associated with it. Does this make sense? Is this helpful to you guys? Let's take this one step further. Do anybody in the room use link chart analysis while conducting investigations? Link chart analysis is the capability of the system to build you visually, graphically, spatially the same information that was presented in the linear. Let's, you'll notice as I hover up and down, I move up and down, it highlights different things over there. If I highlight those same things, it'll highlight it on the, on the right side. Showing the dispatch call that initiated this domestic violence. Here's our good friend, Mr. Adam Flutie. You'll see that I've got one, one layer of involvement is right here, this is the first layer. Then I have everything that's involved to this domestic violence incident in the first ring. That's the second layer. The third layer shows me Mr. Flutie and all of his involvements. I've got this set restricted to three layers deep, you can go seventeen layers deep if you need to. The reason I don't do that is because it's a big black blob on the screen, because there's a lot of involvements. So, if I need to see this domestic, I can click on that one, and that is the same one. We would be able to perform. If I want to check the witness, I hover over the link, the line, it tells me what the relationship is between this person who's a witness to this involvement. Here's Jennifer Ray, she is the complaint. There's the dissemination record that was released, the arrest, let's check Jennifer Ray. If I click on her, it reshuffles and reorders my data. If I want to, I can right-click on that, open her record, check her involvements, see everything associated with her. Looks like she has a premises contact from Madison Elementary. If I click on Madison Elementary, I can open Madison Elementary's record. You can start to see the power of involvements and the ability to link data. And it's very easy to do. Those that have an asterisk next to them are system-created, the ones that are not are manually-created. Meaning, you can link any piece of information to any other piece of information in the entire database. It is that power. Any questions on what you guys have seen so far? Makes sense? Useful tools that we're showing you? Let's get out of this, we'll jump back to our original record of security we started with him. This network option, this is something you guys currently don't have, and we haven't built it for the state of New Mexico yet. But, keep in mind, as we develop more customers in the state of New Mexico, we will build this thing. It's the network option, it's your state link. It's the capability to take this record and run a driver's license query, or add a missing person, or modify a warrant, or do anything without having to go to your state system. Doesn't exist yet, but as we build out and roll out to Mexico, we will create this. Those agencies, or those states that we do have a number of agencies that have this, I tell you what, this is awesome. If you want to run a driver's license query, instead of having to write this information down, jump over to the state computer or read it off of it, you simply accept that. It populates the data into your search module, and you run the search for your driver's license. It's that easy.
Lots of care.
Makes sense? Now that's called the state link option. We don't have it yet, but in all, most of the other states around the country that we have a very good presence in, we do have the capability. So that's something that you can look forward to down the line. The capability to attach files directly to records. We can attach any file type. Let me restate it, because I don't think that you got the entire enormity of what I just said. You can attach any record type, we don't care. PDF, Excel, Word documents, audio files, video files, PDFs. It doesn't matter what is that piece of information you need to link. Link it up, it's there. An example. Generally, most agencies, because ours is a site license, meaning when you purchase, we license your entire agency. And you have the capability to add as many users as you find necessary. You can give your prosecuting entity, your prosecuting attorney, the ability to read access only to your records. Because what happens when you have digital evidence, video files, audio files? You burn those to a DVD or a CD, you send them over to the attorney's office, and what happens to them? No offense. They get lost, don't they? And they make the request again. Well, what do they need that information for in the first place? Well, the attorney needs to review the information. When they need that information from the original evidence that you gathered is for trial. That's when they have to present the original evidence, here it is. But when they're sitting at their desk and they just need to see what was on the DUI tape, you give them read-only access, they find the name of the individual, they open their case file. Inside their attachments, they can see everything that's associated with that individual's record. An example would be a video file. You could open and view the video file directly from the record. And so the double homicide that was filed is not actually correct. It can easily be reviewed by anybody that you give access to review that information. Does that make sense? Again, there are, you can attach any file type that you want directly to the record. It's very easy to review an entire case. And it literally is as easy as attaching an email, an attachment to an email. You click on the import, it's going to ask me, "Where is the file located?" Grab that one, open it, and attach it, it's that simple. Which makes every single computer a capture station. You don't have to go to a certain place in order to do it. Everybody attached. Makes sense? Any questions?
Dave, when you get to looking at FIRE or EMS specifically, I'm thinking EMS data collection and HIPAA and all that, it's tricky. Will you be addressing some of that?
Yes. You can, our system gives you the capability to partition data and control the security of every single field on that screen. So for example, if you have a group of individuals that do not get to see a person's social security number, you create that group on the server and you deny them access to that field and it just disappears. They can't even see it. You do the same thing with an entire record if you want. You can partition that information. It's still there, but they won't be able to see it because they don't have that capability, they don't have that responsibility or that duty, and that's not their job functions.
And then the report that you have available, all those reports are available. It works with NSIC, does it work with NFRS? With the National Fire Reporting.
We do have a NFRS solution management. We actually partner with a company called ERS. I don't know if you're familiar with ERS, Emergency Reporting System. And we partner with them. They are from Five Point Two. Five Point's also fire. But they're compliant in every state.
It works with firehouse also?
Yeah. Works with firehouse if you prefer. We have a number of different companies that we use. Okay? Does that take care of your questions? Good. Any other questions? All right, let's move on. The DL capability, additional names information. DL three six, additional names information. Remember when I said that there was a place to put everything? This is where the additional names information goes. The demographics, where was this person born, their religious preference, the American status, contact information, their employer information, supervisors, homework, probation information, attorney information, ACIC print category is all listed in that additional names information. This person has two additional addresses. Part of being compliant with SORNA, the Sexual Offender National Registry Act, SORNA. You have to track each and every address that a person is located. Not just their residence, their place of employment, their place of school, any place that they're known to frequent. You have to list that information so that when you run a search on a specific address, it doesn't matter that the sex offender doesn't live there. If you've got a missing child and you suspect a sexual predator has abducted that child, you can run a search on an address and say, show me every single sex offender and every single address within a thousand yard radius of this location and it'll bring back and tell you where every sex offender lives there or works there or goes to school there. So you can very quickly get that information out. Precesses information, I'll worry about in just a few minutes. Business information, if this individual is linked to any business, this is the business information that they're associated with. Here's Mr. Larry Patrick Brown, who's a key holder. There's his work information, there's the business information. So you have the ability to keep track of everything. And you'll notice at the top, right there is a, this person has been known to assault police. This is a business record. That Mr. Adam Flutie has been known to assault police. Do you have any calls to exit? You actually have to hit F three instead of F two. Okay? Images, we've already talked about, sex offender, critical notices, known associations, if this individual has gang association, you can link that information here. So if I shoot, selecting involvements, checking visual involvements, I can see the main association and see everybody that's associated with the gang. There they are. Very quickly, you can jump in and see everybody. All of their involvements, you see how quick, easy that is to utilize. Okay? Makes sense? We've spent a lot of time. What I wanna cover very quickly for you is to show you now that you have a foundation of what the system can capture for you. What do you do with it? What's the capability of the system? How is that going to improve the systems that your officers, firefighters, and dispatchers currently use? Well, if I run a search, again, keep track of what happens on that screen, every single field on that is now capable of being searched. I have a victim that comes forth and tells me that they had been assaulted by an individual in an alleyway. They have some description information. Person was between forty-five and fifty-five years of age, male, white, with blonde hair. Maybe guess who might be on that list. Okay? Except he's not that old. So I dropped into my date of birth field. What type, what type of search am I looking for? Well, this is going to be a between search. Correct, I'm looking for somebody born between nineteen fifty-five and nineteen sixty-five. So when you do a between search, most police agencies, I'll be honest with you, have turned this off. What this is, what this does, this is actually asking you to search, enter the days of the week. So if I wanna search for an individual that was born on Tuesday between nineteen fifty-five and nineteen sixty-five, it will find only people born on Tuesday. The system is that sophisticated, it can't do that. If I leave it blank, it's gonna search on everything. So we'll look for the born between January first of nineteen fifty-five down at the bottom of the screen. It's telling me to enter the first value, I tap enter. It says enter your second value, twelve thirty moment, nineteen sixty-five. That is my ten-year time span. The individual was white, they were male, and they had blonde hair. You'll notice when I type BL, it doesn't care. Narrows my list, so I don't have to scroll and now try and find it. One, click accept, or tap F three. There's a list of seven individuals that match that search criteria. So I accept that, that's a good search, but I wanna add to that. My victim tells me, God, it was kinda dark in that eye, maybe it had black brown hair. So by selecting that J add option, I can now select the previous information and search additional name records for anybody with brown hair. Click accept. Now you'll notice on my record number eight thirty-seven, I've kept my first seven individuals with blonde hair, but I've added to it everybody that meets that same criteria, that has brown hair. Makes sense? That's very, very capable searching. Okay? My victim also reminds me that they will never, ever forget evil green eyes. So I have everybody that's listed here with blonde hair and brown hair. Now I'm gonna restrict it to just people with green eyes. So by hitting this J restrict option, I go to the eye color and restrict it to green eyes. There's a list of twelve individuals that match that search criteria. The first four are the individuals with blonde hair. The bottom remaining are the individuals with brown hair. What am I doing? I'm creating a suspect list off of information out of my records management system. That's exactly what I'm doing. That's a pretty good list, that's a pretty functional search capability. But we're gonna take this one step further. We're gonna take it, giving the end user the capability to jump from one table to another table. I have another witness that comes forward who indicates to me that they were across the street when that assault occurred. They saw an individual run out of the alleyway. They were too far away to see what the person looked like, but they saw him jump into a red Ford Mustang. So now I've got that as a piece of information. How do I search that? Well, I join table searches. You would join table. This gives your users the capability to be very selective in what information they want to search upon. Join table, there's a list of all of the tables that I'm capable of searching against. Offense, jail, arrests, case files. Down here at the bottom, that vehicle screen. I select the vehicle screen. This is the first time you've seen the vehicle screen. Looks remarkably similar to a main table, doesn't it? If you can run one table in Spillman, you can run all of them. They're working exactly the same. So what I wanna do is I wanna search for a Ford Mustang. Just in case they forget how to show a Mustang, that's red and colored. Total on the list, I have nine red Ford Mustangs. I click accept. And when I select this use option right here, remember the search I had held in the background, my personal search? Remember involvements? It's now going to check the involvements to see if any of those people have a red Ford Mustang, have any relationship as a passenger, as a driver, as an owner. If any of them have, click on use. Total on the list, there are two individuals that match that search criteria. I'm pretty sure it's not this individual. Handsome as he is. There's me before I retired. You do note that I did work for a county sheriff's office and I have returned my department issue mustache. Saw the Alexis Kirk patrol in Utah County with that very mustache. Do you see a difference in facial expression between those three pictures? Did I mention I was internal affairs for nine and a half years? Oh, Lord. That will make you look like that. And you can check all of my other pictures, there's my lovely bride. Twenty-five years ago, the picture was taken. She still looks the same, what the hell happened to her? Uh-oh, what's that? Well, let's say for example that that was a sexual assault picture. Do you want everybody seeing that picture? No. Only certain people that you give permissions to can see that picture. So you can hide pictures for just people that need to see them. There's my awesome cat. He and his brother after a hard night at night. Makes sense? I don't think it's this guy. In fact, I'm pretty sure, let's check this one. What do we do with him at this point in time? What would the next logical step in progression be? Let's have the victim identify the potential suspect. Correct. So we can do a lineup. Looks what's built right into the system. Capability for a lineup. So it's gonna ask me, what is the, what's the incident that this belongs to? It's building the record. It's creating this list going back to. So I just created a link between this lineup and the incident it belongs to. There's not enough candidates to fill up the lineup. So now I can edit my search criteria. Here's my suspect with all of his data. Here's what everybody else is. Because I've got kinda a small database, I've only, I'm only one demo guy. I only have about three hundred name records. In my former agency, to give you the size of my calendar, we have about five hundred thousand people. About fifteen hundred users on the system at any given time, five dispatch centers. We have over nine hundred thousand name records in that system that anybody can search. When you do a search, you can get really tight and get people that look remarkably similar, or you can spread out. I wanna do everything, everybody within fifteen years, six inches wide, fifty pounds weight. I don't care on the exact match on the race, yes, but I don't care on the hair color. And I don't care about the dirty teeth. Regenerating my list. It's gonna download the images and present them to me. How do you guys generally do your lineup? Six pack? You wanna eight pack? Or a twelve pack? It's up to you. You're most, I can drag people off that don't look right. I can have people in and do it however I want. But here's the bad guy, you're most, I cannot remove him. He has to be on lineup somewhere. Okay? You can print it, you can save it, you can attach it directly to the file. Good. Everybody happy? Everybody happy? Have you guys seen some things that would make a difference in how much time it takes you to do something for your system? Couple of other very quick things that I wanna cover on the name standing. Capability to pin mapping the information. I wanna search for everybody that is a sex offender in my animation. There is a list of all the sex offenders in my animation. Makes sense? Easy to do? Now, what I'm gonna do is open the substance I can show you. I'm sorry, what's going on? Inside here, we have capability to pin map that data. And I can pin map that right here. I don't show you the entire thing, all of those little red dots are the sex offenders. So if you have our geo-based capability and you want to track where all of your fires are, you can track that. You can also keep a list of, you know, arsonists and lay them over the top of known fire pattern around it. I'm pretty soon it starts to, it's right there. This is who I need to be looking at. It's amazing capability. When I was a snot-nosed young detective, I had a drawer full of different colored pins. And I would go through that, okay, yellow was theft, blue was burglary. And I would build a pin map by sticking pins in the location. And if you want, it took hours to do that. How fast did I just build a map of sex offenders? Very quick. I don't like that name staple because I'm going to be giving this presentation to the school board and they don't know what. You guys will have to forgive me, I do have a bit of a handicap. It's a result of a native lieutenant. It's a result of going bodying at the game after that promotion. And I type like a, I type like a retired lieutenant. Let's admit it. I do. Okay? This is sex offenders module. Inside that, I wanna change capability of the system. I don't like this color, so I wanna make those black. And I want it to true type font, and I want it about size fifteen. And inside the true type font, if you guys use Esri map files, you have capability of fine analysis. We all know that the universe assigned the bad guys a ski mask. So now I can change my map to show where all of the bad guys are. Inside that, because I'm doing this for the school board, I wanna add a layer to the map of all of the schools. Add shapefile for schools, there's all of the schools. Inside that, I wanna change the properties of the schools to a nice bright yellow triangle, about size of that big, quiet. Now you can see where the sex offenders were in a relationship, all of the schools. Makes sense? Let's take this one step further. This poor school right here, which is Coffey High School. We zoom in on that, if you can see it. Now what happened when I zoomed in on that? It suddenly started giving me more information. Streets. If I had the platinum map laid on there, you can see the actual outline of the footprints of the plaque, plots going on there. Okay? We zoom in on that, there's Coffey High School. How far away do the bad guys live from the school? Grab the measuring tool, I measure from the high school to the bad guys. It's about three hundred fifty-five yards away from that school. How many of them live there? About a mile. That's a mile. It's a little over a mile. Makes sense? If I wanna see who lives at that address, because our system is integrated, this is not just a static map, it's a dynamic map. If I hover over that and open, it'll open the name record of the individual that lives at that address and present that information to you. And this, you can do with any address in your system that is a valid address. Traffic citations versus traffic accidents, lay them on top of each other. If there's disparity between where they're writing the tickets and where the traffic accidents are happening, they're doing it wrong. Makes sense?
Is there a topographic capability?
Is there a topographic capability?
It depends on what layer you got. I need to see the satellite imagery over it. I can move that up, so that all you see is the satellite in your.
You can integrate your own map or shapefile for your own needs, right? So if you wanna topo map to see how fire's gonna move, you can.
Do you guys, who does your, who builds your maps for you?
I don't know. They come.
County does, you know what the county uses, do they use Esri? PSRI?
I think their AR view with the accessory officer applying.
AR view is like the Windows of Back of the World. And we, we have a very tight integration with Esri and Arc Engine. So you can build those shapefiles. In fact, the newest versions of Esri, version ten, doesn't even require you build shapefiles. This system talks directly to the server. So the instant somebody adds an address into that server, that address is available to every officer and apparatus in the field. So they'll see it. Okay? Any questions? Like what you see so far? I have got you guys for about another twenty minutes on a pound through CAD, a pound through MOL. Kinda showing you where the flow of the data goes. And I think that gives you a pretty good foundation of the capability of what software can do. Let me close some of these screens down. Does anybody need a five-minute break, or do you want me to just continue on through? I got you for about a half hour. That's good? We'll go. Excellent. I'm gonna close this map now. All right. How do you think that they would have? The fire folks in burglary would grant access into CAD from the command line? To a CAD on the command line, it's just that easy. If your job function, if your job responsibility is that of dispatch, you can tell the software, when I log in, open CAD automatically. So they log in one time, done. CAD, here are the CAD screens. Do you guys currently utilize ProQA or EMD cards or?
No.
Okay. If in the future you would like to?
Yes.
We do have a built-in, because Priority Dispatch is located about six miles away from Spillman. And we buy them lunch, and they buy us lunch, and we have a very tight relationship with Priority Dispatch and ProQA. So. All right. All three disciplines, medical, fire, and law. I'm not gonna show those here, because we don't have nearly enough time to overpower you. Okay. What you're looking at here on the command line, you see the command centers, they're very uniform, very easy to use. The next window that you've got now here are the undispatch calls. These are calls that have been called in, dispatcher or call taker is entering the data, but they have not been dispatched to unit or apparatus in the field. You can break each of these windows apart, hook them on different screens. So if you've got a three, or a four, or a six screen dispatch console available to you, you can break them up. I mean, my command center here, my dispatch units, my undispatch, and my unit staff screen over there, and you can break them apart and do everything you can with them. Because I only have so much real estate on these screens, I'm gonna keep these guys kinda locked together. So that kinda could jump like a grenade. You can actually dock, is what it's called, you can dock all of them together. Priority Dispatch. So, inside the undispatch calls, we have structured fire at this address for this agency that has been burning for four hours. We have not dispatched them yet. It's pretty much a mopped up. At this point in time, I also have a burglary there. Down here, I have my dispatch calls, I've got unit one oh two out of traffic events at this address. You can move any of these columns to any location that you want. You can sort by any of these columns that you want and reverse it. You have the capability within configuration of CAD to set up five different configurations. So if I dispatch today for law, tomorrow I dispatch for fire, I can set up my configuration number one for law, configuration number two for fire. Basically what that looks like, I'm gonna do it differently, because I don't have my setup by configuration, I've got to set up my dispatcher responsibility. Dispatcher responsibility for a responsibility of fire. It took everything away. And now I'm responsible for just fire. So very quickly and easily, the dispatcher can narrow their focus or widen, broaden their focus, depending on what they need to see. If I wanna see everything in the end, VRR, give me everything, shows me everything, okay? You can set up five different configurations. Law, fire, EMS, and configuration one, fire, configuration two, fire, depending on how you want it set up and configured. So when you sit down, and I'm on law today, config one, config two for fire, it's very simple to do, okay? Now, any questions on what you see right there?
Pretty serious question. Yeah, so. So if you have an incident that's evolving, let's say it started out as an aggravated battery with a deadly weapon, and then you have, the officers reported two injuries or something. Obviously, you're gonna dispatch your EMS, but you're not gonna send them into the scene, because it's not yet secure. You can track all of your apparatus or all of your agencies on that one screen. That dispatcher can see exactly how long it's been since EMS was dispatched, where they're staged, and track that one incident on that one screen.
Let me show you very quickly how it's done. Right here, we've got a structured fire. I just right-click on that. Do I wanna dispatch the call? Or if I want to, I can jump up here, go dispatch call, what's the call number? One F. That's how easy it is if you're a keyboard person, or if you want to. I haven't even shown you this part yet. See that map? I only dispatched one twelve, burglary, I grabbed them all on that and dropped them, and just dispatched them from the map. Now, you got a little bit ahead of me, so I'm gonna slow things down and just kinda show everybody how to add a call. How do you add a call into the system? Do you guys use call takers, or dispatchers do everything? Of course dispatchers do everything, because they can do everything. Dispatch call, DC. Excuse me, we're adding a call on this. You can, if you want to, type add call, or hit the button right there, AC, see that little dispatch icon right there with the plus? That's add call. Makes perfect sense, doesn't it? Or on the command line, you can type AC, and then what popped up right there, I have a usage line. After I typed in what command it is, the computer tells me what it expects next. So it wants to know the nature of this dispatch call, and the address four oh one, other street. And what these squiggly patterns right there mean is, give me a space. That's all it means, put a space in. So when I type in AC space, F, space, that's looking for address. Then I can type in calls that I want. Um, I use. I told you. Okay. Now if I put a period there, it's gonna block. It doesn't pop up any pop-up windows at all. It just says, you're going in, it's in the system. If I leave that period off, it will open a window to show address, verification, all of those things. So what I'm gonna do first is I'm gonna show you very quickly, maybe not breaking, we've got to get this call in. I typed in the add call, maybe not breaking, address, and put a period behind it, and that call, tap enter. It's in the system that's ready to be dispatched at this point in time. That's what's called a quick command. So if you've got dispatchers that are very adept at typing, they can put a call in about eight to ten keystrokes. Very fast, they can get it in there. Now, I'm gonna slow things down and show you what happened under the hood. So on a F call, I'm just gonna modify it to show you everything is in that call. See, it assigns me a call number that resets every day at midnight. That is just a temporary ID for dispatchers to keep track of the call without having to remember a six-digit number. So every day at midnight, it starts, if you have one that carries over, that number will be held, because you've got an open call with that number. And it'll just assign an extra crucial number passed. Tells you the nature. And it knows, because of what you built into the system, like this F requires a law-type response. L for law, F for fire, E for EMS. If I build one for a personal injury accident, it's gonna have all three of them. And it dispatches all three entities at the same time from the same call. I'll show you that in just a second. Here is the address. It is located at Cross Street in Vickery Avenue, which is low, it is in law northwest zone. I didn't add a complaint, but you can see that I added info. We have been dispatched to this address, four oh one other street, ten times in the past. That's how many times we have been there before. If dispatch needs to see that, put your cursor in there, tap F two, that's to look. That is every single time we've been dispatched to that location. Makes sense? Good information to have. There aren't currently any duplicates. Meaning, you get a traffic crash at an intersection, how many phones line up? All of them? How many dispatchers do you have on? Both dispatchers were taking three calls. What this does is it finds the center point, and around it, it builds about a thousand square foot, and it says, it may not be the exact address, but I know where that first call came in. Are all of these calls within about a thousand-foot radius of that? If they are, they're probably duplicates. But you wanna keep track of who called in, right? So you continue to add the information. At the end of it all, you can say duplicates three. If I click on that and open it, it'll say, these are the duplicates for that address. You can merge all of them together, and it keeps track of each individual piece of information you've gathered, but it adds it to the main dispatcher call. Makes sense? Perfect. Got it. How many names, labels, and addresses? Is that good information to have? Absolutely. Put my cursor in there, tap F two, there are the names of the individuals that woke up at that. I don't believe it was four oh one or four oh four. And so does Aaron Lee, I'm a little lost. How many of those individuals have an alert? Are there any warrants at that address? Are there premises records, and are there address alerts? Yes, there are five. Drug alert, dog alert, possible crack rap, hazardous materials, health hazard. Starting to see the power of integration? Cause somebody at some point in time realized this address is a danger to everybody, and so they added those address alerts. Now, why is that important? Because the officer in the field needs to see the same information, that's the machine. He has one client, he has three screens set up. So I can show you the three different aspects of it. That is the mobile screen. So, what's going to happen, let me show you those. How do they feel, that's gonna be that far screen running down there? That's my mobile officer, this is the dispatcher, and this is what's on the map, the dispatcher. So, now that I've gathered all this information, I'm gonna show you what happens to the officer in the field, but I'm gonna add complaint information. Is there a question? Sorry, I couldn't hear it from myself, Tom, so. Okay. What do you think would happen if I start searching for the last name record? What do you think would happen if I would tap F two, which is the booker's screen? Where's that information gonna go, what does the dispatcher have to do? It goes back to the main table and finds everybody that has that last name. And I'm talking Cass, watch what happens on this screen when I select Cass's name. Everything associated with her is dumped into the CAD call. So dispatcher does not have to type additional information, Cass Armstrong is in there that quick. Makes sense? And it's already created the link or her name record to this CAD call. So if I can find her, I can find the call. If I can find a call, I can find her. Makes sense? Contact, if it's different? Because at a store, who's the complaint? Walmart? Walmart's gonna be the complaint. The contact is gonna be the employee that you need, we give you a place to track both pieces of information. If you give them an address, phone number, and you put all the stuff in there. That hold until button, with that field right there, gives you the capability to hold a call. At three AM, you get a call from a concerned citizen who had a dog scratching the door. It was eleven below, the dog wants in. They have no idea who the dog belongs to. So they let the dog in, and they call you and say, would you like these officers to come over? Yeah, I'm sorry. They have a place to put the dog. Let's hold that call until nine AM. Do you have a place you can put the dog? Yeah, we put it in the laundry, put it by the fire, whatever. So you typed in, hold until zero nine hundred hours on today's date. Zero nine hundred hours on today's date. That's what that clock means, the timestamp. That, that fast. And it'll hold that call until nine AM, disappears from dispatch screens, because dispatchers hate it when there's an open call on their screens. So we hide it to reduce their stress level. And at nine AM, it pops up again, it's ready to be dispatched. Makes sense? I'm actually not going to dispatch that. Okay. That's what that looks like. Now, I showed you how you can dispatch. You can either do it by command line, you can do it by grabbing a unit, dragging them over. You can right-click on it, dispatch the call. What's going to happen now is what we call recommend units. This is turned on in my system. If you don't like it, you don't have to have it, but it comes with the system, it's not a different module. There's no plan found. Meaning, I haven't created a pre-plan for my fire folks. This is just a bet. If I had, these two units were already unchecked. Because in my plan, I would say have two units respond to the staff call. And I've got this sorted by a county unit, law unit to a law call. Then I've got it sorted by a drive time, who is closest to the call. Then I've got it sorted by cost, that's for a fire personnel. If you have an apparatus that costs a thousand dollars an hour to run, and you've got an apparatus that costs five hundred dollars an hour to run, dispatch the one that costs five hundred dollars an hour first. Cause they'd be there for two hours before they hit the first hour, the first apparatus.
So, if, on fire, so within the Enchanted Code, we have a model operating procedure and mobilization. System that we put, the chief's put in place every January. So first alarm for our department says, two of our engines and a tender, then three tenders coming from X departments, water supply engine coming from this department, so that can all be pre, that's the pre-plan, and that can all be in there. So everything, seven vehicles get, apparatus get dispatched at once.
As soon as I dispatch this, I'm gonna dispatch that structured fire, I'll show you. Everybody good? This is the, this is the software recommending which units are closest. You can sort it. I've got it sorted by three things, you can sort by twelve things if you want to. Because, well, let's be honest, cops are cops. And if they can avoid a call, they will avoid it. Oh, I just said it's a lot of fun. You can actually tell it, I want who has been the longest elapsed time gets the next call.
We actually do rotation. We do rotation of calls, we don't, yeah.
So you can, you can keep this, or if you don't want it, you don't have, you can turn it off, you don't have to have it. But it is, we click accept, what happens is it puts those units in the town, they'll go check. And it knows what their next logical status would be, their next one's gonna be en route. For fire apparatus, it will be paged generally, it's voluntary. And EMS, the same thing, and then the next status that comes is based off of the type of unit that it is. So I click accept. It's gonna grab my call, take it from my dispatch call, and my dispatch calls. And.
Your assigned call has been updated.
Notify the officer in the field. This is me out here, you'll notice that my, I'm on the far screen over there. My dispatch or my CAD icon has now become animated. So now you can see that unit one twelve is en route as of point four minutes ago to call number five L in that zone. There's the incident number. And at the top of the screen. And at the top of the screen, my call information. Five at all. Here's my address. Units 105 and 112. Makes sense? Here's the timers for each and everybody else that's in the system. As a unit out in the field, if I don't want to see all of these units, I can just sort it by my agency's units. You guys will forgive me, my throat starts to tighten up. So I've got to lubricate it just a little bit. So now I can filter down and show just what I need. So fire apparatus, you can see the other apparatus who don't. If I want to just see my calls or my zones calls, I just see my stuff. So it doesn't get really, really confusing, I'll keep all calls in here. That's pretty good information to have, isn't it? As a mobile field, as a, as a unit out in the field, if I select that map icon, what happens? It gives me all kinds of information. Showing me, this is my call. You'll notice everything is great big and bold, we're there out in the morning. It can see everything, it's very easy to utilize. If you have touchscreen capable computers, our system is capable of touchscreen. So if I need to see those drug details as a unit in the field, all I have to do is touch that and it opens all of those drug logs. Remember, I showed you that same information on the dispatch side? In some agencies, you have to relay all of that information. You have these alerts, these hazards. With our system, because it is so tightly integrated, everything that the dispatcher can see, the officer in the field can see. So they see all of that information. If they need to see more information about the address, the location, the units that are there, any descriptive information, and you'll notice that it gives me just now, turn-by-turn directions to the address. And dispatchers can keep track of road closures. If they close a road, this will automatically reroute around. This is built off arc engine technology. So it knows that it takes longer for a unit to left turn than it does to right turn, and calculates the best and fastest route for a unit to get there. It shaves off seconds when seconds matter. Gives them a very distinct address. This is where I start, this is where I end, with my travel time. I can add information back into the call. You'll notice that the information dispatcher had typed in is located right there. If I send a comment back, I can send
Your assigned call has been updated.
that information, and it comes back over to the dispatch screens. You'll notice that even route, the status changed. Everything else on that line is yellow, so that changed to red. That indicates that there is a call coming that has been added. So if I open it, there's the dispatcher. Seeing the information clean back from our hall, and then I can type more calls. This is voiceless dispatcher. It keeps lawyers away from their crime scenes. Because if they don't hear, come over the air, the only way that they're receiving that information is via their computer terminal in the car. Makes sense? So it's a very, very secure capability. Again, you get the turn-by-turn directions for it. Now, so we have the capabilities that dispatch has. And I want to touch on your request to see what it looks like when you dispatch a structure fire that has a plan. If I dispatch that call, what's going to open is the response screen. This is what they create when I move over to this screen right here. On this screen, you can see that I already have units that are predefined for this call or a structure fire at this location. These are the two units that I want to respond. Then we have our move-up units to cover. If we have any personnel callback information, any urgent aid packages, and then instructions. All dispatch has to do is select the units. Those are the two units. They tap F3 and accept. And they have just dispatched that call. And those units are now en route. They didn't have to think about it. You've already defined who's going to go. And how you set that up is on this table right here. This is the one that I just sent. You'll notice that I do have a number of different levels. This is a three-level log. The other thing that you had, I didn't really talk about, was the fact that I have the capability to create a hip-like paging system. So when dispatch, dispatches a certain call type, you've got a pre-plan set up for page these people on a homicide. Dispatch doesn't have to hold them in a call book and a callback. A homicide, we call this person, this person, this person. When they type the nature homicide and the address, and they tap enter, it sends a page to all of the people that you identified as being needed to be aware of. And it tells them, we have just received this call. It will send an updated page when their status changes, first unit on scene, first fire after that has been seen. And at the end of the call, it says, last unit. Here's a list of all of your times that it sends up a page.
So on this pre-plan, you've got three resources there. Is there a limit to the number of resources on our first one?
I think there is. I'm going to dig deep. Nine seems to jump into my head. But I, I'll be honest, I've never created one past three fires, three alarms. So if, if there is, it would be nine.
Oh, I don't
I don't know that there is.
For three alarms?
Yeah.
Or is this a reset? So if we have seven resources, they have to be paged on the first alarm?
Yep, you can have, you can set each of those resources up for them.
Okay, so this is just for three alarms.
Yeah. This is the third alarm right here. They appear to respond to these. So inside that record, I have all of these units that are part of the third response, the third alarm. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, you didn't, I, I've lost where you had that.
Yeah, because for one man season, we may have a series of different alarms.
And when you, when you create these, you can see that you can do it by the type of call based off of the nature. And you can leave them wide open. So that one is kind of an all-encompassing. It says, for anybody, any place in our county that does not have a specific location, this is the home where I want to dispatch. So you can have it as wide as your entire jurisdiction. Or you can narrow it to a specific terminal type or to a zone. Say for a fire, a structure fire in this zone, these are your responses.
And it can be by GPS, by lat long, as opposed to depth?
Yeah, ours is, is if you tap controls right there, there is a lot of position on your screen. So you just have that information. But, nice thing about this, you can not only narrow it down by a zone, you can actually narrow it down by a specific street address. If you've got one location that has hazardous materials, and you know that that location houses those materials, here is how you have your response different for that particular location. Then, you'll notice, you do have the capability of selecting a date, day of week, time, and start time and end time. Because your response to the central school is going to be different at 10:00 AM on Tuesday than it is at 3:00 AM on Sunday. So you can tell it. And that's what the book says, it says, okay, do I have, do I have a nature that matches that? Very good. Do I have a specific address? And if I do, what date and time is that going to valid? As soon as it matches that up, it puts the correct planner. They have all of your units. Dispatch doesn't have to think about a thing. You just click units, and it sends the page off and go. Okay, makes sense? Hope.
Yep.
All right. I've got about 10 minutes left. I want to be very respectful of your time. It gave me two hours. Am I missing anything that you guys needed to see? In about the last 10 minutes? Keep in mind, I went real high, real fast. I'll be doing a much more in-depth demo later, over, what, 11 to 5? So you'll have time to drill me if you have interest in specific things.
In fact, maybe now's a good time to mention, we have pizza coming in at noon. And I believe this portion of the demo was ending at 11: and was mainly for the commissioners and other administrators that wanted a brief overview. And then starting at 11, we're going to get more in-depth of, you know, some of the ins and outs and different procedures, and very specific in the different departments. And so, is 11 o'clock when the county commissioners were planning on being done with their portion?
One quick thing, and show you. I'm sorry, that's her. Is there an address? That's what the officer does out in the field. Let's say that I have arrived myself. See, I can, I can click on that big arrive button. And it will send that information back to the dispatcher. And sort this out location. So that everybody that's responding to that address can see that I've arrived as a one minute, uh, 10:00 DC, arriving on scene. Dispatch can do the same thing depending on how you set up. Now that I'm arriving on scene, what does an officer do? They exit their vehicle. Because officers always exit their vehicle. Grab driver's licenses. Give you some identification, who am I talking to? I need to identify you. On the back of driver's licenses, generally, you have a 2D barcode right there on the back. When I slide that, I can scan that information. Doesn't matter what mobile screen I'm on, it pulls that information across form.
Local return, local. Alert graphic report. Local return.
And very quickly, you can see that I can scan information. It's a little too fast. Actually, we have to have 2D barcode now, or it's deleted.
Local return, local. Alert graphic report.
And we're saving information. We've seen before on my name record. Same data. What did I type? I didn't type a thing, I scanned the driver's license. Now, at this point in time, I'm going to create a report, because that's what we do. So right up here, we have the capability, if we're doing a mobile law report, this is just kind of a generic one. We have the capability of building forms specific to your state, because we're not in Mexico as yet. We haven't built them. But we can build, but they will work very similar to this. Now, I want you to pay very close attention to my left hand. Because you know how well I type, you've seen it. What was my dispatch to? So if I select that, hit that action button, it populates all that data, because dispatch has already typed all of that data in that form, you're right. Look, what's come across, the complaint information is already there. I just had to identify hers and his individuals. She's my government entity. And I'm going to add a couple of other names to the step. She's the complaint. Here's name record number two. On that last name field, I have a logo. Who would I run today?
Number eight.
Yes. You'll notice that I'm this. I just ran my driver's license. And the scan shows a different address than the one behind it that doesn't have scan. Well, the one that doesn't have scan, in case, that's kind of in the stolen database. And if I had a true state-length connection, it would say DQ. So you're actually having the capability of searching three different databases by sliding that driver's license in. You search the state database, you scan the information off the driver's license, and you're also searching stolen database. And I can select which one of those I want. When I make that selection, it populates all of the data. Keeping in mind that I have not touched the keyboard with my left hand or my hand, for that matter, I'm using the mouse. My relationship to this, obviously, is as different. And I want to add one more name. Let me pull that up and just see. If you guys need to send Ryan a Christmas card, there's his address. Where do you think Ryan is? Obviously, another, another, and he's the individual's father. Okay? Down here, the narrative portion? How, how much typing have you seen me do somewhere? Down in the narrative portion, we have the capability to be templates. Why are templates important? Because they mandate consistency in reporting. The administration sets these up. They're set up by sheriff, his administrators, or chief, or the fire personnel. And they say, this is what I want you to make sure is in that report. The nice thing about this is it flows through your workflow process and goes up the chain of command, and finally hits the prosecuting entity. Prosecutors know, on a theft case, item number three in the merit is the evidence. That's where it always is. So that's where they're going to look for it. Same thing happens with supervisors. So you just type your report. Report here. You can modify and do things around, change things up. At this point in time, I can add vehicles, I can add property. So I'm on the show vehicle. There's the vehicle. If I have a rag and plate, use the plates that I've run? How much typing? Not a thing. I've run the plate. How much did I rely on dispatch to run my information for me? Dispatch becomes a very quiet place with stolen data. Because the officers do not have we, we used to go to Channel 2, that was our, that was our radio traffic channel. And that was busy all the time until we got here. Officers would run their driver's licenses, they would do everything. As long as the state gives them permission to do it, you can run it by cars from a mobile application. It's a very easy thing to do. Okay? At this point in time, I can save this as a draft. Let's say, for example, I'm in a dangerous situation. I don't want this mode to stolen because it's not done. But I want to extract myself from this circumstance and go to the Walmart parking lot, because that's a law saver, and type my report there. So I can save it as a draft, hold it here, or I can just save it, upload it to the stolen database. But it saves it locally first, because if I take, I'll spend an hour typing this up, I don't want to waste an hour. If I don't have connectivity, and the easiest way in the world to see you who have connectivity is just a second. Come back. There was one validation warning. Generally, it's because the hair didn't recognize, the stolen database doesn't recognize blonde, yellow, and D. It truncates it or just ignores it, because, I'm sorry, I can't accept that. So you click okay. It tells me that I have a new approval item, so the workflow kickoff is already started. See that little green dot right there? If that's red, that means I don't have connection. And the system will just sit there in the background, run, waiting, waiting, waiting. As soon as connectivity is restored, it uploads the data. So you have a difficult time losing information. Is it possible to lose it? I'm like, no, I can do it. You can't lose it if you're not being careful. But we do, we take every precaution we can to minimize that, that data loss. You'll notice that my message center is not active. Excuse me. I'm going to have to lubricate again here. And when I select that, I checked my approvals. The system has issued me, this incident, this law incident, has been assigned to me, current status is input, please update the records. Follows. Do you see delete button anywhere on that screen? Officers cannot, deputies cannot delete it. They have to do something with it in order for it to get out of their inbox. So I can open that, and still, when I select this button, it's going to actually, I have to here, activate my message center tools to now open that in stolen. It activates down here in stolen. This is what the incident looks like in stolen. Keeping in mind how it's typing, I did. There's the incident number, there's the step, there's the address, all of the information associated with it. On CAS, she does have, you notice that we should contact detectives because they won't talk to her for some reason. There's the offense codes, the times, the dates, the narrative. Here's where you create your supplemental narratives. And yes, multiple people can be adding supplemental narratives at the same time. At this point in time, I reviewed it, I'm happy with it. The involvements are all there. It created them for me. Now, I loo- to my supervisor for his approval. Now, I look to my supervisor for his approval. It takes it out of my inbox and puts it in our supervisor's inbox. There's the approval I got from Rob Hall. 10:59 today. Rob Hall opened the record, opened the Spillman, there's the data. That's how easily it moves through your workflow process. From here, I go to a lieutenant. From a lieutenant to investigations, from a lieutenant to records. However you decide it goes, you can move it around, and you create where they go. Right here, I can move this to find review, or I can mark it as completed. Once it's completed, it removes it from everybody's inbox, and it's done. Some of the neat things that has at the bottom of it, I can look as a records clerk, I can see the stats of any case at any time. So I don't have to wake an officer up after the graveyard shift at 9:00 AM to find out if that accident, of course, can be released. I can look at it, and if it's complete, it's ready to go. And I can simply release the information. Make sense? Any questions? Is that one more one? I apologize, I've taken one minute past when I said I would. Thank you very much for your participation and your attention. I'll be here all day. If you wanna stick around, stick around. It's a lot of fun. The more we get into it, the funner it becomes. Thank you very much. Ryan, if you've got anything to leave?
Yeah, is there, is there more people coming from the police department or the sheriff's office? Any specific, is there any records people here today? Rec, oh, your evidence? Is there, is there any officers here or deputies? Okay. So, so with that said, we can, we can go into any area that you would like to now. So this, this was mainly a quick overview for the county administrators, county commissioners, and any other people that were participating. But you're more than welcome to stay. Jay's gonna be here until about 4:00 or 5:00 o'clock today. But if you're leaving now, make sure you come back at about noon for some pizza in our district. We've got plans. So...
I also just wanna mention that we do have access up to go show the site. And Conrad, I know, Richard's here, and he's gonna show us.
Richard Wright.
Councilman, uh, to, 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 to... The equivalent, yeah, where they're going to be for a particular event.